Considerably colder than ours three days ago.
It's funny it's gone over. I was, I was interested that he spent so much time on these video things. Because, well, there's no question.
What you've done was interesting.
And he obviously feels this has been very important.
Yes, and what do you think? I mean, a lot of times, I know.
Fifty one.
It never occurred to me. The border on one side, it could fall in all black, all red. Black on one side and white down the other, or black down that side and white down the other. Black means.
Everybody ready? Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm explaining the hatchments.
Okay, welcome everybody.
I thought there were few, you know.
Welcome Carol back to finance committee.
Just before you begin, Chair, just to say that the microphones aren't working. That's why there's no microphones. So we might have to speak. We might have to speak louder than usual because the microphones are not working.
Okay, are there any apologies for absence?
Just Bill, who is halfway around the world.
And just to say that he did plan this trip, should be able to come here tonight. But then the people who arranged the trip, the company brought it forward by 24 hours. Okay, are there any declarations of interest and relevant dispensations? No, thank you. And part three of public participation to receive members of the public who wish to address the meeting in respect of any item of business included on the agenda. We have David Williams with us. No resolutions may be made under this item and should relate only to matters of council policy or practice and not the individual affairs of the question or any other name present. Any questions from anybody in the public? We've got that big online.
This just.
Good. Item four point one to approve and sign as correct record, diminish on the reading of the financing governance committee on the seventeenth of September. Which is appendix three, isn't it?
There was just one amendment. I know you did mention in full council, it's to FG seventeen oh nine twenty five four point one, where it should read. Financing governance committee not operations in the balance. Is there anyone I noticed?
Believe the date is right.
The date, yeah, the date is on just the.
So if I go through for correctness, just by page, that's page one, which we just had. Page two. Page three. Page four. And page five. Can I have a proposal for the actual minutes, Mrs. Saps? Given to you then, I can. All those in favour?
Hands up.
Thank you. Matters arising from the minutes, are there any?
Yeah, there's a, there's a one. So if you remember the last meeting, you raised a query about the British Gas Bill for Anne Holloway Centre. This is on page two and third one down. I've got the bills in front of me and I'll try and explain why the one bill was so high. So payment reference four five sixty was for one thousand five, uh, one thousand one hundred and sixty six pounds. And then the bill after it, so which was five four four nine was only for a hundred and fifty. So looking at the bill, which is here, it was because the first one was an estimated reading and not an actual reading. And that's the reason why it was so high. Put them here if you want them.
So if you balance them out.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it balances out constantly. That's why that looked particularly high and the level looked below.
Everybody happy with that?
Um, could I just ask, can they not have, I mean, I don't know, can they not have smart meter?
Yeah, so now we've renegotiated our contract with them and it's gone live in September, I've requested a smart meter. Because otherwise I have to keep stabbing him every month. So I'd rather just don't have the readings or something. So it's, it's to be booked in. It's, it's.
Thank you. I was wondering whether there's a reason you couldn't with closure properties.
Yeah, you can't, I think they're just getting round to it slower than, um, so unusual. And I think, Chair, the rest of the items all went to full council and were approved or amended.
And really got any comments about the minutes? No, thank you. Okay, so we move on to financial matters. And the first one, which is appendix C and D are the financial accounts. So looks at the money, we do have some money in the bank. I always think when we're paying authorising bills.
I make sure there is by transferring what I need to from the savings account to keep the current account in a nice balance. Um, because things from direct debit do go out, out of the month and it, it goes up and down.
Do actually check the account.
Good. And we've just, just to say, before this was written, after this was written. Um, we've received sixteen thousand back from H M R C for our quarter two VAT return against cash in the bank. And we have received our second payment of the windfall grant for the solar panels. So we've now had the full twenty three thousand for that. So which is eleven thousand yesterday. So that's, um. So again, I think at the moment, as it stands today, um, the current account's got forty five thousand in savings account, I think a hundred and fifty six.
Thank you, Richard. That will save me a question later on when I read up on the account.
And but as again, I think we've been, we've been trialling a few different financial reports. This one, I think, is the one we're going to go for, which is like a summary that I've done you of the, of the, of the balances plus what the big spends were in the month and income. As you can see, T I C income is steady. Uh, rail commission income is around where it has been each month. Market stall income is currently improved because the, all the stock market stalls are rented out. And meals and wheels income remains steady. So our main income generators. Uh, and of course, the big payments out were, were K R O contractors for the tangible works. Uh, P A B electrical contractors for the solar panels that's done now. Um, and that figure there for the T I C solar in the report is the vatable figure. So what we actually paid was only twenty three thousand, not, not twenty eight, five thirty. Uh, staff salaries, H M R C, um, and real to some of those miles.
Okay, I, I love the report. It's something I've been asking for ever since I joined. So thank you, Richard. What do other people think of the report? I just found it really useful. I, I still go line by line through this.
Yeah.
Um, it does.
It, it should be no substitute to your line by line analysis, especially this committee. Um, I think you should be even more prudent on finances than other ones. Um, as you can see, line by line, though, there are overspends in various areas. I think H M R C, I've explained before, uh, basically, um, as you all know, employers' national insurance went up by one point two percent for this year. However, um, when we've been inputting the salary data into the system. Actually, I need to go back now, um, before I was doing financial elements of it. Um, the, what we pay to H M R C is nick and tax. And of course, tax is out of the salaries code, because salary is a gross salary and taxes being out on H M R C. Whereas H M R C, the line itself should just be nicks. And at the moment, it's been taxed and nixed. That's why we're showing overspend. But I just need to do some more journals from the previous months and they should come back down until I look on it.
And, and for me, it's the first time on the account. I haven't got any clue with it on the account.
I've got a sample.
Yeah, good. I'm familiar with that, just me.
Um, under operations and development income one on two zero.
Yep.
Um, when are we getting the money for the phone mask? Because we're halfway through the year and we haven't seen any.
It usually comes November time.
Does it?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought.
I will, there's, there's a, there's a few that are outstanding. So if you notice that recreation.
Yeah, that was the next one.
The rest club rents, we've only received. Hundred pounds from the rugby club and joint cricket club brand rent. We're still waiting for the other payments because I think we just have to invoice. Um, but there is a way in the system, we can set up the system to automatically invoice on a set period. So I'm going to set them up to do it every year. So we don't forget. Um, because it's important that, you know, we budget this income to obtain it.
Thank you. Um, the other question I've got was about vehicles, line double four, double zero.
Yeah, recreational.
Street seat.
Okay.
And it's, it's, well, to me, it's extremely high and it's over what we expected.
Yes.
Already.
When you set your budget last year, uh, you only put five thousand four hundred in the budget for vehicles.
Yes.
However, um, the black transit van lease costs six thousand two hundred a year, I think. It's definitely six thousand, but I'll get to it when we come to the budget for next year. The tipper is seven thousand one hundred. And then, of course, the tractor, you took out the finance of the tractor earlier this year. Again, wasn't budgeted for. That's why that code is showing such a low spend. Because the budget was not, not set against what our actual leasing requirements were.
Okay.
Um, the vehicle itself, so, so, um, the tipper. Is. So the tipper will be seven thousand one hundred. And that's for the new one, but of course the old one, that's a hundred pound more a month of the new one. Um, and the black van should be five thousand nine hundred. And then the tractor is five thousand four hundred.
I have some particular concerns about these vehicles. I think they're bigger, more expensive, considerably more expensive. And also they're not as environmentally friendly as we, well, say friendly. They are more environmentally damaging than the ones we had before. Um.
The ones, the one budget where vehicles is correct is Meals on Wheels, which we've got four thousand in the budget, but only require two thousand and something. Because it's two hundred and fifty two pounds a month.
Uh, the other question.
That's electric, yes, that vehicle's electric.
Yes.
And it comes to an end next September. So.
Yes.
Consideration in the next budget will need to be made, what we're doing about replacing them.
Thank you. The other thing was not a question, it was to pass on a congratulations. Because, uh, under, um, the events and planning fifteen hundred, the income on commission sales. The, the tourist information centre is, um, ninety three percent of their annual expected income. So, you know, this is really good.
Yeah, if you look, if you look across the budget, it's actually ninety eight percent of the entire income for T I C budget.
Yes.
Has been obtained already and we're six months in.
Yeah.
Let's hope for another, uh, another hundred percent before we end the year. But as we know, um, sales will now dip in January, February, just that's the lulls of retail, but it's going really well.
Cheers. My new bag is here.
Well, there you go. That's it. There's a.
I thought you brought your pet.
It just looks like a good head.
Right, thank you.
Richard?
Thank you. Yeah, um, just a couple of lines. Um. Insurance.
Yeah.
Four eight five oh.
It says two ten, isn't it?
Do we, I mean, we, we, we've spent our budget for the year.
Yes.
Virtually. Is that because we just pay all our insurance bills in one?
Yes, we pay them in, um, we pay them in May this year. Um, and it's twenty five thousand one policy, four thousand another, one thousand for another, which is cyber insurance, which I'm sure you're all aware of at the moment. Cyber attacks are happening. We actually have cyber insurance as a council.
Yeah.
And then, um, the other is construction and engineering insurance. And however, because we've had new vehicles throughout the year, I'm chipping away at that nine hundred under spend. Because the new tractor, for example, was, I think, three hundred pounds additional, only it was forty six pounds additional to what we'd already had. So we paid a lot of it, but there's still a few more to pay.
But you're not, you're not suspecting to overspend?
No, no, definitely not.
No, okay. And similarly on I T costs. Same question. We've, we've spent a vast majority of the budget, four eight six six.
Yes, um, this one probably will overspend. Um, because it is, it's four hundred and six pounds pretty much a month. Because it's our I T support, A P management and telephones monthly. So that one probably will be overspent. If you want me to, though, I can find you, I can get exactly what has been coded to that account. But if it shouldn't be there, move it to the right place. For example, I think. That the photocopier lease that we pay quarterly. Should go under services and it's gone under I T costs. So there, there might just be some movement in code. It's been in the wrong place, Richard.
So it's about miscalculation.
Miscalculations as opposed to overspending.
Right, okay, thanks.
But I'll, I can, I can get you the printout of that, of that paragraph again.
Could I just come back? There was one other thing that I have mentioned this and I mentioned it last year under the, I think we've been mentioning it for many years. Is, uh, uh, four nine double zero miscellaneous costs.
Yes.
It's, I feel it's not good accounting to have so much in miscellaneous.
Yeah.
And that concerns me because it's still.
Yeah. And for, for example, miscellaneous costs in the tourist information budget. Um, is for the monthly service charges that we pay for the car mission. Whereas the miscellaneous costs for two ten, which is administration management, is things like, that's where the petty cash stuff gets coded to. Even though it's physical cash that we've paid out, it has to go somewhere in the ledger. So it gets put there. So for example, tea and coffee or locks, new locks, those type of things tend to go there. Um, locks was a different one because actually that's going for repairs and maintenance. But I can always, at the end of the year, we can look where these things are and move them to the right places.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, just to mention in relation to I T costs, there are across the budget, some other areas that have got I T budgets. I haven't explained anything in them as well, so. That might even answer. Any other questions about the, this current account?
Same transcript and, and the man joined us to.
Um, welcome, Bill. Uh, David, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, without wanting to go back in time too far, I wondered on the, the vehicle overspend. Um, we said the Meals on Wheels vehicle lease expires soon. When, when do our, but newer leases on, uh, our other vehicles expire off the top of your head? Um, I, I was wondering, now we've obviously got these solar panels paid up on the, uh, T I C. That does change the, the dynamic and enable the potential for, for free motoring. Uh, you know, are, are we able to sort out the, the parking situation at the T I C and get a charger installed? That's another question. And also, if you're considering electric vehicles, uh, it does change the dynamic somewhat in terms of, uh, buying versus leasing. Because, uh, you know, wear and tear on E Vs is significantly less. They don't have a fossil fuel engine that's going to wear out after a hundred thousand miles or less. Um, so that, that, that's something else to, something else to factor into the equation. Just yes. When, when do our current leases expire though is the question.
Okay, um, I will have to, I don't know about the black van. Um, I can tell you when the tipper expires. It's three years from now. Um, so that's the, and then the Meals on Wheels van is September twenty twenty six. But I would have to, I'd have to look at the lease agreement for the black van and see when it expires. Um, I can get information to you online. And then the tractor, I believe, was five year finance package. So that will be another five years. Again, that's not a lease, that's a finance package. We, as in, we're, it's like P C P, but we own it, as in, they lent us the money, we're paying back the money. It's not a lease. So we own that tractor and. Uh, but in terms of electric charging, you're right. Um, it just, the, it would have to be a, a conversation with, um, Power, so we're in, of course, Church Street Car Park in front of the building. About how that would work, where we can put the vehicle to charge it, where we'd have to put the charger. Because of course we're not allowed to obstruct pavement with cables, for example. It would just have to have to be a conversation with, with Powers.
Thanks, Richard. Yeah, obviously easy to come by an electric van and an electric tractor at least for now, but it would be interesting to know. So thank you.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, we're done with the, to propose we accept those.
Yes.
Thanks. Yes, thank you. And Alison and Richard, all those in favour?
Hands up.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm abstaining, Chair. I can't hear a blind thing or what's being said.
You can't hear a thing.
It's no point in me being in this committee. We might as well postpone it now for another night because I can't, I can't hear.
Okay.
Want to move closer here?
Sir?
Want to move closer?
Can you hear what they?
Can you hear what I'm saying?
Not unless you speak into.
There's no way.
No, there's nothing. Can't hear a word you're saying, especially if you're talking like that and you're speaking downwards instead of the rest of us.
I will try and articulate.
It's not just you, no, you, you generally speak in the direction of the person who's asked the question. Which cuts the rest of us out because we can't hear, it's not because we're deaf, but not certainly not deaf. Richard, shall I?
It's been a year, but when it, when it comes to anybody on there, she can switch away.
Hear a thing on his side.
Uh, Dave asked a question about leasing, when the leases expire for the, for the vehicles. That's what his question was.
If you're uncomfortable, should be getting up and doing your job. If something went wrong, push for it.
That's the noise you have to contend with it. So if you're.
Anybody can turn the knob right up.
So now I can hear.
It's working.
It's just that noise. That's the problem. Can you hear that?
Can you hear that?
Yes.
Can you hear better now?
I can hear you. You're closer to the mic now.
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't talking to the mic because the mic wasn't working. Catch you. Okay, shall we move on? If you're struggling to stop, I will, um, go over again.
Yeah.
So appendix C on invoices for a phone book for this month. Now again, this is in a different format because of improvement for the I T system. Um, firstly, I quite like it because it shows all of it and lots being paid, lots through direct debit to just new tools, the writing. Um, and the blank ones are the ones that need the authorities, isn't it, Richard?
Yeah, the ones in yellow are the ones that you're approving. Um, the ones in grey have already been approved in effect because you've already signed up the direct debit, so.
So does anybody have any questions on any of those payments?
The only thing I was going to ask is, what have we been using Spotify for?
Oh, um, you know, when we do remembrance in the car?
Yes.
It's the music.
Oh, is it? Thank you.
But we pay eleven pounds a month for the privilege. Uh, it is an ongoing license, but yeah.
Okay.
Just to. Chair, it's a small, a small one. I mean, it doesn't affect the payment this time. But if we're paying sixty one pounds seventy for modern daily water supply, could we not just switch off the water supplies to months?
We have standing charges.
It's just standing.
It's standing.
Whether we turn the water on or off, that's what.
Yeah, we pay, we pay thirteen pounds and two pence every month in electric spending charges and then sixty pounds every six months in, in the. It's because we're, we're made as a business and they just, it's much more expensive than your household water. Even, even though it's with the same company, it's in the same place.
Right. You can't turn it off subject you don't even pay a standing charge.
Well, they don't, I think you'd have to get the meat to take it out.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how, how, how much that would cost then to put it back in if we now needed it, but back in.
Yeah.
I've, there's an organisation I'm involved with that has actually been having this debate because I thought that. And the general consensus, although this is not, you know, this is what. And the general consensus, although this is not, you know, this is what they have said because of other research is that it is so complicated to get it taken out that when you want to put in, you're waiting nine months for it to be put back in again.
Okay, any other questions about the invoices?
No.
Would somebody propose that we accept those invoices payment? Or would we recommend to council? Thank you, Alison and Estelle. All those in favour?
Hands up, hands up.
Phil, are you, you still not able to hear?
I can hear.
I'm sure.
Abstaining.
Uh, Dave, could you just speak? Or Phil, someone of you speak that you're able to say a few words. I'm just testing this.
Hello.
Dave, can you hear that?
So the item five point three, security of payments. Um, and Phil Ral was supposed to be feeding back tonight, but obviously, oh, no, it's Phil.
It's Phil. Um, I don't think me and Phil have managed to get together to do it yet, so it's still outstanding to be done for, um, September. Uh, if you remember though, the next, the next one is Estelle. And then it's Dave? Yes, Dave. And then, um, if you could let some for December tonight, that'd be good. We'll just do it as a rolling, rolling one now.
Be telling me where we are on this.
Five point three.
Item five point three, security of payments.
Sorry?
Five point three. Security of payment.
So it's scrutiny, I think.
Sorry, I missed one there.
It's item five point three, scrutiny of payment.
Five point three.
Yeah. So that was the exercise where one person goes and, um, checks the invoices we're paying against what we actually pay to make sure that they're real and there's the evidence to back it up. I'm quite happy to do it in this number one. If everybody's happy with that, I'll just.
Yeah. Yeah, nice part.
Um, Phil, I've said I'm quite happy to volunteer to do that exercise in December, so if everybody's happy with that.
Hands up.
Yes. Hands up.
Uh, the, the, the next person after that in January, um, has to be someone who isn't a bank secretary. Um, January needs to be someone that isn't a bank secretary because it's going to be brought to February.
So then expect charges. So item five point four, is the I S P action plan, that's a strategy action plan, isn't it?
Sorry, um, I put the word I S P as I have constantly writing out interim strategic plan, so, um, it's now I S P. Um, but basically this is just, uh, every committee's happening this every month, which is their committee work plan effect. Um, as you can see, the, the, the work plan for financial governance is, is shorter than other, other committees. Um, some of the year one stuff, I started to put, um, progress against, uh, the comments. Uh, and of course then years two and three will get to next year.
So this is just a part of the plan that affects this committee. We're just noting that.
Yeah, just noting, um, one thing I would draw your attention to, um, last month, uh, we discussed about the newsletter and being posted out to my houses. Um, we couldn't come up with a name for it. Um, so we put it on Facebook and there was a poll and, um, the, the name Owl Welsh Ball was like overwhelmingly the one that went a little bit. I thought, um, we might actually write it to be trash sometimes, I thought it flows quite nicely, but, um, that's fine. The people, the people wanted our Welsh ball, um, so it is that and was actually sent to the printers yesterday. Um, it's, we slightly delayed being delivered for twenty seventh of October, but that is all booked in, ready to be done first week of June.
Contrasts nicely with my Welsh.
I, I know, I thought that's, yeah, for Dave, it's five bits.
That's his, this is ours.
As long as the people have spoken.
Yes.
You can't have spoke. So five point five is the budget for twenty twenty six, twenty seven, and this is the first draft that this committee will look at.
Yeah, so, um, other committees have already looked at their first drafts. Um, but because you're responsible for monitoring all of the finances, you've got the entire budget for the council and for draft run.
Yeah. Um, I don't know about everybody else, but, but I, I found it a bit confusing because Richard had moved a lot of stuff. So as you're going along, I think it will rise in the budget for that, but it's been moved to a different process and everything. And so a lot of my red writing is unnecessary.
Yeah, apologies. It was, it was about changing the budget to accurately reflect, um, for example, the expenditure, so the services budget previously was like everything ducked in it. But I think it should be electric, gas, water. Yeah. So you can actually see what's in there and you can see that there's no spending in electric, but an expense in gas, that type thing. Um, other than that, there was a lot of stuff locked in recreation and street scene, because we don't do street scene anymore. So those have been split out into playgrounds, operations, maestray, playgrounds and then waste collection. So you can just, as you can see, and then every event, so just being in one events budget now has its own budget, which means that you can accurately see what the income and expenditure is for the entire event as opposed to just seeing the income and expenditure for the entire events budget. That's, that's been the main change.
Now, I know a lot of people will have questions, so I'll go around the room. Whoever wants to go first. Richard, you put your hand up.
Am I right in thinking that you're making no assumptions about the staff review or the private party agenda?
So this, the, the draft budget that is before you this evening was written way before the staffing review ever appeared on my desk. So is the current structure just fluctuated five percent for?
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay, because one of my questions relates to cleaning contract and that's later on in agenda. So the, the, the budget that's before us is as, as it is at the moment without.
Well, there, there's a slight change to the cleaning one, but with the staffing salaries budget is what the structure is at the moment. That's pretty. Um, basically, the, the paper, there is a summary, um, if you turn to, um, section three, um, expenditure is, is going up, things possible, however, income has also gone up, um, by an obvious amount. Um, the net budget requirement there is slightly different to what it actually is now. Basically, um, the only change to this budget since it's been published, uh, since the report was written, was, um, additional lines added for bunting. Um, as we know, the bunting in town is, is not in a very good condition and more needs new bunting. Um, so a nominal fee of three thousand has been added to the events budget for bunting, but, um, that's just the only change. So that changes the net budget requirement slightly. Uh, the key cost though is the, um, outdoor salaries can all link to one cost centre. Um, utilities, um, higher lines have been introduced because, um, our current energy contracts with the town hall, uh, E I C are changing from April twenty twenty six, they, um, are going, for example, our gas at the moment is two point eight kilowatts per unit. Um, from October, it's going to be five point one. Just because the, when we took the contracts out five years ago, the nature of gas was a lot lower. And as you know, war in Ukraine has forced utility prices to spike up, meaning that, and there are increases for utilities in the budget. Um, there is a, there is a sum at the moment in the budget, twenty three thousand four hundred and thirty four, and this is for a loan repayment linked to, so a thirty year public work loan, board loan, the capital much from the town hall. However, no decisions can take, I've just put it in the budget, so it's there in case, as in, if we're not going to make a decision before January, we'll take it out. Uh, vehicles now affect the actual budget that we need. Um, maintenance and projects, so end of season works has gone from twenty thousand to twenty three thousand, just because we know third line deposits have gone up. The last one was, um, twenty one thousand or something. An additional twenty five thousand have been put in the budget into rebuild general reserves. However, this does not comply with the investment reserve strategy because actually we've established a budget in six months. Uh, however, six months, um, pre-set, uh, budget would be like a hundred and eighty thousand. So I'm not sure we'd be precepting a hundred and eighty thousand, we won't go to comply with that. However, um, what we're doing this year is slightly different to previous year. The way we're doing it actually comply with section fifty of the nineteen ninety two act. Basically, the precept is supposed to be the sum between income and expenditure. What we did last year was we actually increased our precept to have a shortfall of twenty four thousand, which was our rebuilding general reserves. What we should have done is actually just put that in the budget. Because the precept is supposed to be the difference between the two amounts, not artificially inflating expenditure to get that shortfall, that makes sense. We should have put it in the actual as a line, not, not as a shortfall. Um, counting events, so ten thousand, including the, for the lights, you know, are required and then three thousand choose to be done to. Uh, there are new lines in the budget for tourism, marketing, biodiversity and shop front schemes, all reflecting the approved interim strategic plan actions for year two. Uh, income has gone up against various areas, um, so has increase in T I C. Income's also gone up in markets, for example, off my head, because we're now accurately budgeting for the income from the market business unit, formerly market cafe. Um, income for meals and wheels has stayed pretty much the same. And if you'll note that our following centre budget, annuals world budgets are just exactly the same because of course we don't know where we're going to be. It might be that we have to take those out completely, but if we're, we're not responsible for those services, that's, that's fine. Um, national insurance pension budgets, um, reduced. Um, that is in terms of the R F O's position has been taken out of what budget it was. When I said it's the current structure, it's the current structure, just the R F O taking it. That's why the cost is slightly.
Right. It's not the current.
Today.
No, it's the current structure as of today. As of today, yes, as of, as of the staffing contingent today, that's what it is, but, but when I said structure, I meant requirements, not, because the structure itself, we get on to later in the, in the paper. Uh, low professional fees, nineteen costs following contract renewals. Uh, cleaning budgets reduced because now only one cleaner is employed. So currently the current budget's got thirty thousand across different lines. I think I've reduced that to twenty. Because that would accurately reflect really that one cleaner. However, there is a paper later about cleaning. And then maintenance budgets have been reduced, like for the wall off works and Mont Bailey and the town hall. Uh, reclassification, the rates are now split fifty fifty between office and T I C and they have been revamped by the V O A. Um, I've moved some elements of, um, the event officer salary into events to accurately reflect that. Some of the T I C salaries moved into meals and wheels, so accurately again reflecting the actual spend in the areas and staff salaries. And then, um, move, as I said, those service budgets into gas, electric, water, et cetera, um, and events. So, um, that's pretty much it. And again, at the moment, it's far too soon to be thinking about what type of band D requirement this will be. We don't know what the band D figures are until it's approved by the Paris' Cabinet, usually happens in November time. So, um, draft two budget, um, will be slightly different. However, I'm asking you this evening to just basically ask me to prepare draft two, which looks at the utility costs in more details and the staffing costs after tonight's, um, discussion. Utility costs in particular because we know that they are going to. And I think I'll answer any questions. I have got a list here, um, line by line of the budget, plus my comments. So if you ask me any questions about line, I should be able to tell you where it's gone to or what's happened. So, uh, use that exercise.
Um, so Alison, right, um, two, three, O events.
Yeah.
Um, you've got an Edron choir concert. Is this something that's booked or is it something that you've just used that as a heading for an event?
This line, sorry, Alison.
At two, three, O events.
Yeah.
Um, you've got, um, line, uh, one, eight, nine, zero.
Oh, it's because, um, so the budget shows what the spend was in the previous year.
It's right.
It's an event that's been in the previous year. There's no budget in this year because it's not an event, but it appears because you're looking back a year.
It's actually looking back several years. It's when I was there, so.
Okay.
It's a long time ago.
Um, if you look, um, from choir festival, it looks like last year five hundred pounds got put in the budget against it. That's why.
Right.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, it just picks up any say, yeah.
We're expecting us in the previous.
Whereas we wouldn't have seen that because it was just events. Thank you.
Um, one, one question for me in the, in the T I C, I think it is.
Yeah.
With this, um, five thousand pounds agreed in electricity.
Yeah.
And so with the solar panels, will that, isn't that reducing our revenue?
Yes, so that's what I meant by going away and doing properly in draft two. Basically, I had to put something in, so I put like nominal sums in. Um, but what I need to do is analyse, now we've had two months worth of bills for the T I C based on the solar panels. Kind of need to, it's, it's a bit finger in the air and work out how much we think we're going to budget for them. That's, that's the issue is we haven't got a full year's usage to base it on. Uh, so that, that will have to change if that figure, that's under, yeah.
If it's anything like my solar panels.
Yeah, I've got them at home as well. Line, let's cut my cost by fifty percent, so.
Well, yeah, you get, you get half as much of the, in the two winter quarters as you do with the two summer quarters.
It's, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a useful one. Um, the difficulty is for us is we've got two different systems. Uh, I explained my, I think I just do something complicated. Um, when the T I C and toilets, when the toilets were refurbished, the office had a separate meter added to the office element of the building. So the, the corridor, my office, him's, the main office and the top bit is on a separate meter to the T I C and the toilets, which are on the same meter. So for the solar panels, one system does the T I C and toilets and one system does the office. Now, what we're seeing in the moment is the main costs are with the office because it's all electric heating.
Hmm.
So we're trying to turn our heating down, but it's been a bit chilly in the last few days. Um, but, so it's like the two different systems and one we have, um, night and day rate electricity. So I've set it up so the system recharges the battery in the cheaper electric at night for the T I C and toilets, but the office doesn't have the night day facility. So the battery on that is usually quite low, whereas the toilet T I C battery is always quite topped up. So we get the savings because we're using the batteries that are supposed to be very decent. It's going to be just, it's going to be a fun, it's going to be a fun one. We'll get, we'll get a bunch of us.
It. Going, Alison, I wonder whether the other meter was there because of the time when rights taxes were there.
I assume so.
So it was always on two meters.
Yes. Yeah, and I think that the, my main thing was, um, somebody asked, didn't they, why the electric was so expensive for the toilets? And actually, I'm pretty sure it was the T I C.
Yes.
That was causing it to be.
Yes.
Expensive. I thought T I C in the office bought one meter and the toilets was one. But now we've considered, we've now discovered that the T I C and toilets are one and the opposite is the other. Um, and it's because the door opens and shuts, cold air comes in, heating kicks in because they're electric heaters, but yeah.
And, and I have one in principle, a question related to events.
Yes.
Um, and it's in relation to direct sales.
Okay.
So I think in this, you've said in, in your explanation, but you've reduced things because of reduced demand.
Yes.
But you have to have it to sell it. It's been one of my things since I've been here is that, um, they, they have a certain amount that they can buy stock with to sell it. And.
Yes, so the current budget has fifteen thousand in for direct stock.
Yeah.
And I'm proposing we change that to five thousand, only because of this year, all they've spent is three thousand three hundred ninety eight of the fifteen thousand.
However, in the strategic plan, there is a line that says we want T I C to sell more stuff. So that's why I'm just concerned that those, the things don't equate to each other so that, you know, if we want them to sell things, I've got to buy them first before to be able to sell them.
Yes.
And I think Wendy, at the events committee, has said she could sell more stuff if she had more stuff to sell.
Yes.
So, um, so just, and I'm sure we've worked at our.
Events.
At the events commission, that was the in principle thing. Yeah, any other big ones I have? Most of them have been answered. Oh. I did the other one from events was, can we have a line in it for presents for Santa, from Santa?
Yes.
Everything, everything else is in there. Um, in winter festival, um, it is something that draws the children there and.
Yeah.
I think it would be good to be able to have whatever budget it is. Um, so that we can see what we are spending in that way.
Yeah.
And at least we can say to Kim, yes, you can go up to that, am I?
Yes.
And last year we used the, but the, um, rattle, kind of get from some. Anybody else got any questions about the draft budget? Can I just say to Richard, I love the report. It's what I've been looking for. What it tells me is that you've got it under control. It does concern me though that, um, as we know, everything is going up, but for some of those lines of expenditure, we haven't increased them, which means we will have to be very careful to keep within those budgets with that, whatever the increase nationally is in the C P R area or P R. But we know that.
Yeah, I, I think that the next step, um, Yeah, I, I think that the next step, um if you were aimed to tonight, if you're happy with what we presented, is to, if you look at section seven, the decision. So it basically says to prepare draft two, but also ask all the other committees to consider savings where they can. Um because of course, the, the more expenditure you can cut, um the greater, uh the greater the change in um expenditure will be.
And obviously, we will need to um revisit this again.
Oh, yes, um every. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um none of that has been claimed as innovation yet, so.
So we're asked to note the draft one budget and instruct the town clerk to bear track to budget. I'm sure everybody's happy to instruct you to do that. And our message to the committee is asked for the last series to review the draft two budget to November. And to see where we can make any more savings against the budget without affecting services arrangement. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You think about it?
Yes, it needs to go to councillor's recommendation.
Right, so that's a recommendation from this committee to cancel the act.
I have it recorded, sure.
Recorded.
Yes.
Richard. Phil.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. Still for. Paul for. I'm for. Phil.
Four.
David.
Four.
Thank you.
So it was everyone was nice, Bella.
Yeah, yeah. He was abstaining.
That's fine. Thank you. You prefer the second.
I prefer it. Somebody seconded it. Okay, so item five point six, fees and charges reviewed. So. And can I, can I just mention at the beginning that the, the actual people on the review were actually myself. Assistant for Loi and councillor Phil Pritchard. Um Sally didn't attend any of the, the meetings. Do you want to go over this?
Yeah, I can, uh it's pretty satisfactory. Uh basically, um back in, in May, um we said, you, you got together a working party. And that's why it says Mo and Sally, because that was what the resolution was. And I know that we added on Phil and Phil. At somewhere else, I can't find where it is, so um that's just why it says that. So um we met twice, I think. Um I mean, look to all the fees and charges that have been levied, there is a list of everything that we, we have fees and charges wise. And basically, we came to the, we came to the conclusion that a lot of our prices previously had things like plus fat. And it was just making things complicated for people out there, so we changed all of the, all of the things to inclusive that, simplify the advertising fees. We also looked at getting rid of the charity rate, that we moved into the non-commercial. So thanks, I have three different rates for different rooms at the town hall, we now only have two rates. Um I, by looking at this, while there's no pressure, um we did look at other venues um in the Welsh ball area. And looked at what they were levying and tried to match or better where we could, to try and make it a bit more competitive. Um we think out there anecdotally that people think the town was more expensive, actually, in some cases, it's actually gonna be cheaper than some of the other venues in the area. But not, not that much cheaper. Um and we're confident that we can obtain this income, um as you can see already in the budget for the current financial year. Um we've exceeded our assembly rooms target, but we are down still, so it's a bit of a, bit of a um thing. We've also, um we also thought that only charging thirty five pounds for a wedding was absolutely scandalous. Um and um instead proposed a, a, a wedding package, um of various different elements. And and Mo worked on this quite well. Um and we also looked at um kitchen usage versus non-kitchen usage. So um in the old bookings, kitchen usage is included, it's nominal, so cups of tea. Whereas if you need it additionally, then it's the twenty five pound charge, I think, if I, I remember rightly. But anyway, we're, we're saying now that marriage package should be the hourly room rate, which would be thirty five pounds for the chamber. Plus a hundred pounds licence fee, because of course we paid um one thousand something for the licence. Uh and we've got um different packages around wedding breakfast, so that was using the kitchen and the bar um in the assembly rooms. And that also setting up, then we looked at exclusive use of the entire building of the first floor, that was five hundred. And we also looked at a wake package, because we know that um they can be quite popular um in assembly rooms, so it's trying to put together some packages. And pretty much the rest of the fees and charges um weren't really to change. Um everything else remained the same. Um market, um market ones are kind of fixed by powers, so the charter outdoor market, um we're not really allowed to vary them too much between the other, um other towns. And everyone has them at one pound per foot or three pound, I think they're delivered in metres, but we still do um in the old imperial system, so we're one pound per foot. And the rest of those fees were remaining the same. And the only one that really was changing was um the admin fee for T I services was being standardised at two pounds. As opposed to one pound for something, it's two pounds for something else, two pounds fifty.
Same one, then was fifteen p, wasn't it?
Yeah, and at the fishing permits, well, we charged one pound admin fee. However, the admin fee is favorable, so we actually get eighty seven p. We pay thirteen p to uh H M R C for the, for the uh heritage. So we tried to change it to, to match what we're also charging for National Express, for example, which was two pounds, so just um, just to equalise those ones out.
And the one thing we tried to do with this was to get away from this charity license. For that, and that charity license for this one. And so there are two separate issues and that's it.
Yes.
Um the car will, will uh decide on which category, and it should be fairly obvious, which I'm very into. Um. The other thing with this is the courtroom.
Yes.
And what we felt was appropriate was if someone did want to book the courtroom for an event, then that's fine. We don't, we're not encouraging it, but should somebody apply, then we want. Suggestion that the town clerk has discretion to decide whether it's a suitable. Um booking to be held in the courtroom to. Because of the. It's the courtroom.
Yes.
Heritage.
Uh you, you will laugh that, um I did find some minutes earlier from nineteen seventy four, when they decided their town hall um rates, and they went through. And then at the end of it, they said, oh, but we'll give it to the Royal British Legion for free. So um they did exactly the same exercise we're doing this evening, but um thi- this exercise is supposed to get away from giving it to charities. And reduce rate, because I think it's got very confusing. I know that this is Darby and Joan, how different rates, everyone else, it's, it's, it's administratively, it's very difficult. Terms to administer, so um the, the only question before you this evening is when do these go live? And of course, do you want to actually change the fees as I set out below, but um we, we know if you wait for the new financial year. Then we can't really start to advertise them, but there was a suggestion that the fees, you could say the fees apply from any bookings from that date onwards. So for example, we've got a wedding booked in, in June next year, and we don't know what to charge them. Do we charge them the booking fee is now? Or if you were to say that it shouldn't be the wedding package fee for, for that year, should it then be that package that applies?
What is the fact, would it be if you changed it with the calendar year?
Um we, we would, well, we, we'd be able to market our fees better if we did it by calendar year.
Cool.
We know that all bookings then in twenty twenty six would be a set amount, not just after.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, you know, we may work on fiscal years, but. Yeah, most people don't, so it would probably be more useful to them. And you could advertise it from now.
Yes.
Yeah, it is true that, that fiscal year is a business thing, not, not.
Yeah.
Not every, people's everyday.
No, it's not.
They're not, they're not all waiting for the end of March straight to turn, you know, it's, it's new year.
Not everybody goes, oh, thirty first of March, last day. Um so I would propose that we recommend that this is for twenty twenty six.
So from the first of May, for bookings which will be held after the first of May, first of January.
First of January, yes, first of January, on or after the first of January. That also means that we have the opportunity to do that each year.
Yes.
With our budgets, we can also do that, so people start to understand that you may or may not be putting up prices. And of course, when we've transformed town hall, we'll possibly be putting prices down.
Yeah, we were very clear that this was.
Well.
This model would only be up until the town hall transfer.
Yes.
Like we'd have to relook at it.
Yes, well, our costs for running the place would be entirely different. Yeah. So.
I'm ha- happy to second that, I'm just concerned about bookings that you've already taken. And are you suggesting, because I, I, I think if people have booked. The venue on the basis of existing prices, we need to honour that.
Okay, that, that, I think that, that was in before you, it was like, should it apply to the booking in twenty twenty six? Or as opposed to, I know people have booked now for wedding next year, so the wedding fee would be this fee now.
Yes.
Or next year's fee.
Yeah.
And that's why I need you is, will it apply to the bookings already booked?
I think it should be this year's fee.
Okay.
I, I was going to.
So Phil.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that um i- it's when, when the, the event is booked and paid for. Rather than when it actually takes place. So if people want to book an event that falls within the new period. But they, they book it and pay for it within the old, they have the advantage of paying the lower rate.
That, that's fine. And the only thing I'd say to that is that we don't invoice them for their booking until the month after they've had it. Um however, those people that have booked for next year, that their prices are going up suitably, might pay um the initial, um that's the only.
They know that.
Yes. For example, that, that wedding, I'm sure would be paying thirty five pounds, not, not a hundred pounds.
We could, we could have the discussion that, well, depending on the changes that impact them. As to whether or not they want to pay for it in advance and, and therefore attract the old price. Or pay for it after January and.
Yes.
Or when we invoice it them, because it will then be at that year. That's the reason.
On the understanding that it's non-refundable, I guess, because otherwise people might just book it on spec.
Well, I think it will have to fit with our terms and conditions of booking a room, which will have the refundable issues.
Yeah, and the, the terms and conditions for booking the venue though, um also need reviewing, because it says that holding deposit is also required. And that fifty percent of the payment is required before the event takes place, whereas in practice, we don't do that, we, we just charge them after the event. So, so yeah, I think the terms and conditions need looking at as well, but um uh if you all agree to that, that's our sense of.
So I have a proposal from Alison, and a second to Richard.
I'm happy to second, I've just got one more question on, on another topic, um allotments. Um the hospital site last time I looked, it was very well used, was full, I think. The Burgess Land Site is not full.
That's fine.
Is there a case for having a different rate of those land sites to try and improve bookings?
Essentially, the only reason it hasn't changed is because we were applying to give twelve months' notice. To allotment holders for any changes in fees, and it would be a lot smaller in time, nineteen oh six. So because of the twelve month lead time, we decided to leave it as it was, because no prices would actually be changing through the twelve months, e- even in decreases. Um because they're, they're a higher protected characteristic than term law. But you're correct, but actually, in the last two weeks, since we had a discussion about it at council, we had more inquiries for allotments.
Really?
And a hospital site now is full completely, and somebody wants that, that bare few plots on Burgess, which is great.
Well, that's.
And but we're, we're, our record keeping allotments doesn't seem to be the best. So we are going to write to everyone, because um it seems that some people have left their tent season, we don't know, for example. Um so we're gonna write to everyone who has, basically get them to not reapply, but in, in effect, update their tenancy agreement to a newer standard. Starting in January, and then we know, we've got the level playing field, we know exactly who has a plot. And what the requirements are, and for example, somebody asks us the question, are they allowed to burn stuff on their own? Well, there's nothing in the agreement about burning, there is something about keeping chickens, there's nothing about burning, so there's a few elements of the allotment's tendency that we're looking at. That will come to council next month. However, I'm just, I'm just saying that basically, we need to move them to a different system of administration. And they will be able to advertise it properly, so.
Um can I go back to my proposal, plus what Phil said about the fact that they can pay, pay now? If they want to keep the today's rates, yes. And therefore, and then I propose it.
So we have a proposal and second there. All those in favour?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Phil. All those abstaining? Okay, moving on to item six point one, which is a digital engagement uh report. That was very impressive.
Yeah, if you remember, we did the first one back in forty one, it seems like a lifetime ago, um back to, back to July. Um but this is just the one for quarter two. Uh this committee has got a remit of for engagement and reputation, so it's important that you see, but basically. We're having a lot more engagement online, which is great, that we're hopefully trying to break down some barriers about communication uh with people. Uh we've had some particularly good news over the past couple of um months, for example, dollar value fencing, tank lock being stalled. Um so, you know, it's all been good stuff, so we just continue to do so. Happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you. Any questions for Richard?
Nice, good report again. But could I, would I ask that we mini, that it's minuteed, how much we appreciate these reports? They are really good, and they are, it means you can sit down at home, spend a afternoon with a cup of, few cups of tea. And read it all, and it's very good, thank you.
Yes, can you mean it?
Yes.
You needn't bother about putting the tea.
That's fine.
Okay, Jason, next meeting, the next finance and governance committee will be held on the nineteenth of November um at six thirty P M. Um and we'd like to move that we move into confidential session and exclude the public. Yes, thank you, Estelle and Phil. If anybody wants to refresh their.
Let me just turn.